And. Yes, all right. Good evening. This is the April 13th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the Town of Groton. Jeff Pritchard is the chair. Staff tonight is Diane Glombosky and Deb Jones. We will have the opportunity for the public to address the commission under Public Communications. In order to do that, you need to be recognized by raising your virtual hand. So on a PC, you can find that hovering at the top of your screen. On a, on a, no, sorry, on a Mac, you can find it at the top of your screen. On a PC, it is at the bottom. And if you are on the phone, it is star nine.
Okay, so I'll call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. First item is a roll call. It looks like we have everybody in attendance tonight. So we have a quorum. First item on the business is approval of minutes of previous meetings. Since you cleared up the backlog, we have five meetings to minutes of meeting, five minutes to approve. I'd like to go with just one single motion to approve them all and then go down each one individually to see if there are any any corrections to be made. Rather than making five individual motions, which
That makes sense.
Done in the past with only
And that's smart.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the meetings of February 9th, February 11th, February 23rd, March 11th, and March 23rd. Is there a second?
I would second that.
All right, and we'll start off with a go down minutes individually to see if anyone has any corrections. The first one is February 9th. Are there any corrections to that set of minutes?
Again, I'm listed as being voting, I think. And I
On this one?
It has a motion, the motions have me voting.
Yeah, it does. Those have to be corrected.
Yeah, I thought we caught all of those. Sorry.
Okay, it's good you picked that up. I never look at the box. I just
Um, someone must have, was I in that meeting?
It said everybody was there. Doesn't it? No, it doesn't.
No, no, I was absent. So someone
Stevie, you were there. I think you voted Steve.
Oh, okay. So that's all right. So but then somebody else wasn't there. I just counted it.
Yeah, that was, that was me.
Okay.
It says Kevin sat for, um, for Kane.
Hey, yeah. That was a different one, though.
Richard Seated Crystal for Kane.
And Kane's not look, oh, but it Yeah.
So it should say Kevin fit. Well, he was the voting member. And who wasn't a voting member.
So that should be corrected, right? And that's on the two, two pages, right?
Yeah, motion to adjourn also.
Six. Are there any other corrections? And then moving on. And on the February 11th meeting. Anyone have any corrections for that?
I just saw, it wasn't, I mean, I know what it meant, but on page two, I guess it is at the bottom where it says Pratt Building Improvements. And then there's a sentence, this discussion of a theater parks and recreation program. Parking requirements.
Oh, and it should say and.
Well, or some, just so it's a that it has
Yeah, right.
Makes some sense that that doesn't say even, I mean, just that.
Yeah.
That's all. Verb. We need a verb in there.
Yep.
I think that's what that is.
So the commission discussed these items. Okay.
Parks. And just put and, right?
Yes. Yeah, that was it. I mean, it was just they didn't
I figured people could read it, so I was after having so many I gave up. Any other corrections on the February 11th meetings? Okay.
I guess there's one thing on page one at the bottom that I just didn't think was very clear. It's the last full sentence there that starts with staff said. Staff said that the costly improvements to the Pratt Building, the Ring Road and the Ferguleski property are designed to limit the traffic through the existing neighborhood. How's a Pratt building fit into that sentence? I just, I didn't see that as being part of
I don't, I don't remember if they said that, those words.
They would be two, they're two different thoughts, really.
Yeah, it's two different things. I don't think staff would have said, said that exactly.
I think it might have been talking about the traffic to the Pratt Building. It got wrapped up in there.
Right. If I think, yeah, the Pratt Village should be taken out of it, so.
Oh, rather than through the existing neighborhood or just take it out?
The idea, it limits, it limits the traffic from the Pratt Building to the existing, through the existing neighborhood, but it doesn't really serve anything. Just if Pratt Building wasn't in there, it would still be exactly right.
Yeah, just take it out.
Or, yeah, it just needs to be reworded.
Yep, got it.
Okay. Any other corrections to the February 11th? Minutes, February 23rd? Minutes. Does anyone have any corrections? To that one?
No, I do not.
And the next one is March 11th.
I had a question on March 11th. On the first page at the very bottom, the commission asked when the master plan was last updated. Hanover said the plan was last updated in 2005. There was not project at this time to update the plan.
I would think you could change the not to know. I hit that one too.
Yeah.
There is no project at this time.
Okay, that's it. But I just, and then that does, so I have a question about that because when we ask that something like that occurred, is that like a demand or is that just us talking?
I think it's a suggestion, isn't it? Well, we did. We did say later on, it said it should be.
It does say that it should be updated, but does that mean that it will be updated or that we're just?
That's right. All we can do is recommend.
Okay.
But it did say that he was supposed to get us a copy of the
Yes, he did. Yeah, it's
I don't think I, I don't remember getting one.
No, maybe it's still coming.
Yeah, but in the set, in the sentence right above that, there's another error. You have an incomplete sentence in the last line of that previous paragraph where it says pedestrian and trail plan period would get a copy of the map to the commissioners. Hmm?
Yep.
I think it should say what he said he would get a cop or he would get a copy to the commissioners.
Yep.
Maybe would be filling out. They have the corrections on March 11th.
Again, the motion to adjourn has no votes in it.
Exactly. I'm pretty sure everybody voted yes, so we'll fix that.
Yes, they did. So, oh, yeah.
Everyone who could vote is blank, huh?
These things put in there on purpose to see if we actually read the minutes.
Like to say yes.
Well, his same proofreading is not very accurate. It really isn't. I mean, his eyes tend to go over. Okay, and the last minute set of minutes is March 23rd. So any of have anyone corrections there?
I did eighteen so it's a at the, on the second, the last page, page number six, at the bottom, report of commission. Oh, where I at, what came inquired if questions presented at the PZC meetings from the public get a response and how it is done. And that I also asked that we should establish some sort of a frequently asked question section either on the town website or or somewhere so that these questions have a place where people can go to and find answers.
Okay. I had two comments on this one. I saw on page five. When we were discussing the site plan. There's some talk about limiting hazardous materials. I thought we had made a statement that the applicant would have to provide a list of the materials and their quantities to the, to staff for retention. So it could be because of the write-up was fuzzy and it just referred to what a normal homeowner would have. And I would think that a business would want to have, say, at least a case of oil and not just one can, which is what most homeowners would have. Could you recheck the the tapes and see if that there, there was something in there for that because that would become a technical item then? And then on back to commission reports, reported chairs just left blanket. It should say none. And so it's obvious that it wasn't just a, somebody forgot to put something in there. Are there any other corrections to that one? If no one has any other corrections, and we already identified, then I'll move forward with a vote on approval of the, the motion to approve these six or five minute, five meeting minutes, seven minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion is carried unanimously. Next item is Public Communications. Does anyone on commission have any communications to bring forth? The staff have any? Does anyone in the public wish to address the commission tonight?
We have a couple of folks.
All right, if you want to go through them, Deb, then.
Scott Westervelt. You ready to go? Here we go. Mike is off. Mr. Westervelt, are you there?
Scott, just turn on your mic.
Has he muted?
He is.
Yeah, he is muted.
Asking to unmute. Um, maybe we will come back to Mr. Westervelt. There we go.
I am here. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, I'm in a
I'm sorry, your sound is cutting in and out.
Heard the Did I lose you again?
No, I, you're, you're cutting in and out. We can, can only hear maybe every 10th word. All right, maybe you can
Why don't we go to the next?
I think so. I think so.
Scott can get about fixes communication problem. We get back to him.
There we go. So Hal Robb.
Hi, Hal Robb, Seven Hancock Drive and Mystic. I guess first of all, I'd like to applaud your perseverance in getting all of your meeting minutes sorted. I was getting flashback cringes to similar situations that I've been in, so I, I applaud you for your perseverance. What I'm really here to talk about is, well, first of all, I'm one of the people that's opposed to the size of the development of the Mystic Oral School property. A few planning and zoning meetings back, I had identified that the development agreement between the town and Restler did not obligate planning and zoning to change the zoning of the Mystic Oral School property to be in alignment with the details of the scope of the project. I'm bringing this up again because I have learned recently that a similar approach was used to get a large project development agreement between a town, North Kingston, Rhode Island, in a contract or in advance of changes to zoning that would match the scope of the project in that town. In this case, the zoning was amended to align with the development agreement. However, there are claims that the commission responsible for approving those changes was not aware that they did not have to approve the changes just because of the signed development agreement. I certainly don't claim to have any firsthand knowledge of the events in North Kingston, but it is distressing to read articles in local newspapers online that describe similar circumstances to what we face here in Groton. I fear that backroom pressure will be applied to force planning and zoning to approve what the development agreement describes as the scope, even if planning and zoning disagrees with it. So my, my my thing here is to please remember the development agreement does not require you to rubber stamp the scope. And thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And let's see. Becca Welch.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, I'm Becca Welch, 32 Boulder Court in Mystic, and I wanted to say first, I am amazed at the level of attention you pay to the approval of the minutes. I have voted to approve dozens of PTA meeting minutes over the years, and no one has ever made a motion to amend any of them ever. And now I'm seriously considering doing it at the next meeting just to see everyone's reaction. Thank you for being so thorough. It really makes me feel good to know that you care so much about getting things right. And second, I wanted to say that I never received an answer to my questions from the last meeting about the green incentives and how they impact zoning regulations. I did follow it up with an email, and I'm wondering if I should send that again because I still would like those answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we receive an email on?
You know, it's been three weeks since the last meeting. I don't know.
I can't remember, but yeah. If Becca rescinds it, then we can
Very good.
Now we can get back to her.
Very good.
Was that, I'm not sure exactly what she means, but in the proposed change, there was something in there that we haven't really looked at yet, so.
I think she may be referring to the incentives for increased density, but
Yes, that's what I was, yes, but we haven't really discussed anything on that, yeah.
All right, let's see. Ken Mayer.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Pritchard and members of the committee, the opportunity to speak. My name is Ken Mayer. I live at 88 Ann Avenue in Mystic. I wanted to add my voice in opposition to the proposed Restler development at the Mystic Oral School. As others have stated, I believe this development is simply just too big for the area. Building a 931 unit apartment complex will add a minimum 900 plus and likely a maximum of 2,000 new vehicles to an already extremely busy and fast Cow Hill Road. Although not guaranteed, if a pool, community theater, coffee shop, restaurant, commercial spaces and hotel come to fruition, the additional traffic will overwhelm Cow Hill and the on and off ramps to I-95, creating a public safety issue for both residents and tourists. I believe the size of this complex will stress existing water and sewage infrastructure and is likely to place an increased burden on the local school, Northeast Academy. The upgrades to infrastructure coupled with the tax givebacks through the use of tax increment financing, TIF as it's called. The developer has stated TIF as a requirement may result in the Town of Groton mortgaging future tax revenue to fund the developer and infrastructure should the anticipated increase in property values not be realized. There is simply too much uncertainty and as a result tremendous risk in going forward with this proposed development. I want to add that, like others, I am not opposed to developing the Mystic Oral School property. I could support the Grousing, excuse me, Groton Housing Authority proposal referred to as the Village at Mystic Ridge. This, it seems, is a reasonably sized development with really nice amenities that would fit nicely into the existing landscape and community. And should the amenities such as the rec center and community theater not be realized, we would not be saddled with a 931 unit mega complex. When this zoning change proposal is eventually presented to this committee, I simply ask that the impacts I and others have laid out, please be considered. And again, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Let's see, Roseanne Katuski.
Good evening. Roseanne Katuski, 24 Ann Avenue, RTM District 5. I will be brief because I've said a lot to you, to the commission over the past several months, and I've asked a lot of questions. But I just want to support Commissioner Kane's suggestion of having our questions answered. So that's my, what I would like to say tonight. I would like our questions answered. I know that it might not be easy answers, but we need to have answers to these questions and all my questions are documented and in your meetings. So thank you very much for all you do, and I'm looking forward to having these questions answered. Thank you.
Thank you. See, Elizabeth NATO.
She's muted also.
Yeah. Elizabeth NATO, you can unmute yourself? Right, maybe we will come back to her. All right, let's see. John Scott.
There, my name is John Scott, 674 Cow Hill Road in Mystic. I just want to add my voice in opposition to the size and scale of the proposed Wrestler project at Mystic Oral School. I've for years said the development needs to happen up there. I don't want it turning into a Norwich hospital style property where the properties are so run down that it's useless. But 931 apartments is just over the top. I want to publicly go on record and say thank you to Town Council Rachel Franco, who heard some of my complaints about possible traffic issues online. And she had the police department come visit the house and they put up a, a traffic counting device that also tracks speed. And in a six day period, nearly 28,000 vehicles passed the end of my driveway on Cow Hill Road, which is just down the street from the proposed project. It's almost 5,000 cars a day at unbelievable speeds. That there was actually a handful of vehicles that went past the end of our driveway going greater than 70 miles an hour on a road that there's no place to get out of the way if you're a pedestrian or a bicyclist. And the speed limit on that road is 30 miles an hour. I, I think that we need to be very thoughtful of the fact that 931 apartments figure two people living there on average. You're going to have a heck of a lot of vehicles that that road cannot handle. And you know, the, the size and scale of the project needs to be scaled way down. And that's my message to you guys today. And thank you so much for, thank you so very much for the work that you're putting in today. But just again, I want to go on record saying that that project needs to be scaled way back. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see. Sally Booth, leave.
Hello, my name is Sally Booth. I live at 46 Pearl Street in Mystic, and I want to thank you for your service to the community. I too call in opposition to the size and scale of this project. While I think development and improvement of that property is important, I think this plan is just too big. This project appears to be an extraordinarily large and unprecedented project for this area. I hope your commission and the town councilors carefully consider and communicate their research about the dramatic consequences this project will have in terms of traffic and public services to the residents now living in the area. I also agree with some of the previous speakers that the questions need to be answered. The public is becoming more and more aware of the complications associated with this project. So thank you very much for your service and any enlightenment you can give us all. Thanks again.
All right, thank you. Let's see. Robert Welch.
Good evening. Robert Welch, 18 Boulder Court, Mystic. I'd like to thank the members of the commission for the concern they're showing for those of us who live in the neighborhood of the Oral School. And to emphasize that while a proposed development will have a major impact on us, it will also adversely affect all of Mystic. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's try Elizabeth NATO again. There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. I lost you last time. I tried to get you back on my phone and, oh, yeah, yeah. So Elizabeth NATO, 380 High Street. I just have a couple of things. I was driving on Route 27 north past the seaport, and if you look across the river, you can see just barely through the trees before they leaf out the actual oral school buildings. So if you happen to be traveling that way, take a peek across the river and you can imagine two different sections of housing between those buildings you can see and the edge of the, the tree line because that's what the proposal is going to entail. My second thing is it's not just people in the neighborhood around the school that are having problems. There are people that I'm hearing from downtown, other neighborhoods around the, of Groton. Their people are afraid that developers are going to try to strong arm you guys, and I don't want you to feel that you are left hanging because you do have the support of the people in the town. So thank you for what you're doing for us. Oh, and the other thing is, I did have a question about this Restler project. How much land is it encompassing, whether it includes the wooded area that slopes down to Mystic to the River Road and the Mystic River or not, or if it's just the flat land on the top? I don't know what is being considered for rezoning. So I could get some clarification on that. That would be great. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, I, oh, here we go. Scott Westervelt. Let's see how this one goes. Okay, here we go.
Good evening, everyone. How are you?
All right, good. We can hear you.
I apologize for my, I don't know, my technical difficulties, I guess I'll say. Anyway, I was reviewing the minutes from the, from the workshop for the Mystic Oil School. And one of the things that I noted in there was that it said that the regulations regarding the sewage was adequate, I think is how, not sure exactly how it was worded, but indicated that it would be okay. But the original plan was for 750 units and the raw sewage output was 158,000 gallons daily. Now, I imagine if it goes up to 931 units, that number is going to go up. So I want to make sure that, you know, we don't consider that to be adequate, that it does need to be re-investigated. So and also I noticed in that set of minutes, there was an awful lot of the, everything's going to come out at the master plan stage. Just curious if we have any idea when that's coming down the pipe, if you guys have heard anything? Because we're not hearing anything out in the public, and I'm just curious if anything's been brought forth to the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding the master plan stage. So other than that, I appreciate everything you guys are doing. Thank you very much for your diligence and hope to talk to you soon. Take care.
Well, the master plan can't be presented to us until we have the the change to the zoning regulation approved to allow it. So we're quite a ways away from there. And I think your sewage question, that was probably related to the size of the sewage plant versus the piping.
All right, let's see. Susan Griffin, so I am getting a message that says allowed to talk is not available because you're using an older version of Zoom. So I am, I'm going to try to promote you to panelist and perhaps you can speak to us then.
Or can she call in?
There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Again, I want to thank the the commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission for all the great work that you're doing and we very, very, very much appreciate it. My name is Susan Griffin and I live at seventy four Cowhill Road. I also oppose to the rest of the project, but I do support renovations to the Mystic Oral School project at a more appropriate level to the neighborhood. Over the years, I've seen the Mystic Oral School deteriorate into a very sad state and again, like others have spoken again tonight, I hate to see it looking like Seaside or the Norwich Hospital. And watch, I've watched all the continued vandalism and deterioration. It's very, very sad. But we would appreciate something being done, and I agree with all the previous comments regarding traffic, sewer, water system, and all these things as we live in the neighborhood and would be very negatively impacted by all that. So we do support some project, but not a project of this scope. Thank you very much. Again, thank you for all your hard work.
Great, thank you. So let's see. All right, I am not seeing any other raised hands.
Squeaky door.
Is.
Door's coming in.
Um, hold on just a minute. Let me just, okay, so I've got one more, actually, one more person just raised their hand before we leave public communication. Linda Vogel.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I live at three fifty eight Pequot Avenue in Mystic. And like everyone has said before me, I appreciate the work that you all do. And I also appreciate that we need to do something with the Mystic Oral School property. I have a concern about the scope of it like everybody else does. And one of my worries is when, and it could happen in ten, fifteen years, Electric Boat loses contracts or we're no longer building submarines. We lay off thousands of workers, which has happened in the past. And we have built nine hundred and thirty one apartments. And I'm very concerned about what would happen to those buildings. Would that become a derelict Crystal Avenue like in New London? So I think there are many, many reasons in addition to our neighborhood concerns and our village of Mystic concerns. I think there's a future concern, a building of this scope in this area seems to me very dangerous. That is my comment just looking forward. Thank you again for your work and good luck with this decision making.
Thank you. Okay, I do not see any other raised hands.
All right, then we can move on to site plans. For the first item is SIT twenty dash ten Gerard Nissan addition for twenty five Gold Star Highway. We can hear from the applicant his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is David Hell. I'm a professional engineer and land surveyor with Provost and Rivero. And I am going to share my screen here so we can take a look at the plans. So these are the site plans that we're looking at here. And I'm sure you all are familiar with where the Gerard Nissan site is at the corner of Gold Star Highway and Antonino Road. This is the entire property here. It's a little over seven acres. You can see in the the northerly portion of the site is the existing dealership and service building. And it's surrounded by paved parking for customers, employees and vehicle display. This property is located in the CR zone and it's also in the WRPD. And I'm going to go to sheet three on the plans here, which is the site development plan where most of this is taking place. And you can see here on the easterly side of the building, the shaded rectangle represents the two thousand six hundred fifty three square foot addition that would be built there. And the purpose for this addition is basically in keeping with Nissan's national branding requirements. They're looking to upgrade the customer experience both for sales and for service. So if you've driven by the dealership lately, you've probably noticed some interior modifications going on. And there's also some exterior facade work to to put new ACM panels on the front of the building, hunting on the roads. And as part of this overall project, we're constructing this building addition where customers can experience what I would call a better customer experience when they're bringing their vehicles in for service. So you'll notice if we go back up to the existing conditions in the property survey, this area right here is where that addition is proposed. It's currently either concrete sidewalk or by two minutes concrete pavement. So since we're constructing the addition in that area, there's going to be no net increase in impervious coverage on this property. And as such, we don't require any storm drainage improvements or modifications to comply with the WRPD stormwater requirements. Because we are located in the WRPD, though we have, we have paid attention to the existing system out there. At staff's request, we completed an inspection of the existing storm drainage system. We noted a couple of items which we felt would be prudent to address somewhere throughout this project process. And I believe the draft motion that staff has prepared for this evening includes some of those items, one of which would be some maintenance work on the outlet structure in the detention basin, which is here at the northeastern corner of the site. And just including on the actual plan set, some locations for future inspections and maintenance of the system in its entirety. One thing that I will bring to your attention is back here in the southerly side of the site. There is an oil water separator, which is part of the storm drainage system. Again, at staff's request, we actually had that structure pumped and cleaned out. We did an internal inspection of that structure. And we had some, some minor maintenance work done on, on the outlet of that to comply with current deep requirements. So moving forward, that would be part of the inspection and maintenance schedule that will be included in the plans. I'm going to go down. No, actually, we'll stay on this. First site plane here, along Gold Star Highway. There is a narrow sliver of land that sometime in the past, the property owners purchased from Connecticut DOT. It was formerly part of the Route one eighty four right of way. And for a number of years, they had a lease agreement with DOT. They subsequently purchased that land. And they've been using that as a vehicle display area. Staff had brought it to our attention and the owner's attention that that was, that area was never included in the original site plan approvals for this property back in nineteen eighty six and nineteen eighty seven. So at staff's request, we're actually proposing that that display area would be abandoned. There would be additional landscaping installed there and the existing gravel surface that's there now would be replaced with a permanent vegetative cover with the addition of some, some topsoil there to supplement the grass growing. And on site plan number two, which is sheet four, this is the southerly end of the property. You can see here, we've also noted, notated some other areas that have historically been used for employee parking or staging of vehicles. A portion of it here on the very southerly end of the property is gravel surface. A portion of it here at the northerly section is surfaced with pavement millings. And similarly, those areas have just kind of resulted over years of the, you know, the site use expanding, but not necessarily with town approvals. So again, at staff's request, we're calling for those areas to be restored with the, the pavement milling is removed. Whatever, whatever vehicles are staged or stored back there would be removed. And that area would be restored also with a permanent vegetative cover. And going down to sheet five, we've included a detailed inventory of all the existing signage on the site. And with the exception of the main brand sign down near the intersection of Antonino Road and Route one eighty four, these signs are all basically directional in nature or, or safety oriented. So this just demonstrates compliance with your zoning regulations. The existing brand sign, which again is down here near the intersection of the two roads, will be replaced with a a new sign compliant with Nissan's branding requirements, but the same size and height as what's out there right now. And we've shown down here is sign number eighteen, a detail of what that main brand sign would look like. We do understand from corresponding with staff that signage is not necessarily approved as part of the site plan application that separate permits would be necessary when the signage is going to be installed. Moving down to sheet six, this is a detailed landscaping plan. It actually shows all of the existing landscape plantings on the site as well as some areas where we'll be supplementing with new landscape plantings to bring the site into compliance with your current zoning regulations. We're proposing some modifications and additional plantings along both of the road frontage sides of the building to accommodate the new sidewalks and the new building addition. Also, we're proposing to expand these two existing islands here within the paved parking area to provide the the required landscaping area in accordance with your current regulations. And we are installing street trees up here along Gold Star Highway. Again, to comply with your current regulations and supplementing existing street trees along Antonino Road where existing trees may have been damaged or, or died out over the thirty five year life of this property. And the only other sheet in the site plans is just the details and note sheet. So there's nothing really too exciting there. Again, we've had a chance to review staff's draft approval motion for this project. We don't take any exception to any of the proposed conditions in there. They're all relatively simple and basic, adding some mutations to the plans and just enunciating the storm drainage inspection and maintenance requirements on the plan set themselves. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions that the commission may have on this project.
Okay, I'll let staff make their presentation first and then we open it to the commissioners for questions. So is that you Diane?
It is Diane.
You're muted Diane.
Yes, it is me. Dave Hill did a good job of explaining the whole application to you. This site was actually approved in nineteen eighty six, so it's been around for a while. There was a site plan modification in nineteen eighty seven. But after that, there was basically no site plan approvals for the site after that, except for some signage approvals. When we, when they did submit their application, they were doing that small addition to the to the building and they were doing it over impervious surface. So there wasn't going to be any increase in impervious surface. But we didn't note that there were some areas of the site that were not consistent with the original site plan application. And they had a choice at that point. They could actually incorporate those areas into the site plan and continue to use them, or they could remove those areas that Mr. Hill discussed and re-vegetate them and just have this new addition be the site plan. If they did keep those other areas, then they had to do a probably a complete upgrading of all their stormwater to meet the new stormwater regulations for the WRPD. But since they're re-vegetating those areas of the site and only adding the addition on the impervious, the existing impervious area, the regulations say they don't have to go through the, the upgrading of all the stormwater. So they did do a complete review of their existing storm order. They cleaned out all of the areas they could. There is a report that basically says there is some minor work that needs to be done in the detention basin over the next year or so. And they will continue to look at and maintain their stormwater system going into the future. So that's basically in compliance with the WRPD regulation. And then they also did the upgrading of the landscaping on the site to be in compliance with basically the nineteen eighty six and eighty seven site plan and the new zoning regulations for landscaping on the site. So at this point with this plan, they meet the regulations and we have basically a few items on the draft motion that we sent you and I can put it up if you have, if you're ready for that. And I will leave the site plan up as you, we discuss it.
Okay. So anything else Diane?
No, that's it.
I'll open it up to the commission for any questions they have. I'll start with you Mike.
Muted. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess my, my, my questions are more general for staff initially. The drainage hasn't been improved in thirty five years, thirty four years. What, can you give me a general idea of what, what is there and what the difference would be between what, you know, to?
I think the, the engineer can give you a good description of what is there of, if, if they did need to upgrade it, they would maybe potentially add a hydro dynamic separator versus an oil water potentially add a hydrodynamic separator versus an oil water separator, which is a little higher level of, um, of cleaning of the stormwater before it gets into the detention.
Driveway that leads out onto Antonino Road. Uh, how much of the parking lot is actually just sheet flowing down it? And just out into the street?
If, if Diane, I can, I can go over that, but you'll bring up the site plan number one, what shows the contours on it. And I will zoom in here so you can see what's going on there. So this is the entry here. Uh, I'm assuming you're, you're looking at this entrance here, not the one to the south?
Yes, yeah.
You, you see this 92 contour here and there's a catch basin right here. So there's a very narrow sliver here, uh, looking at the way these contours are that would bypass this basin and go out into Antonino Road. But for the most part, that would only be this area right here. And the rest of it is caught either by this catch basin here because this parking lot is curved. Or it's caught by this catch basin here because this entire parking area here is curved. And there's another catch basin here. Uh, so and I'll, I'll actually go further to the south here also. This is the other curb cut onto Antonino Road. And you can see there's 98 contour here and the way it wraps around. So there's a, a high point right here, just about where this curved island starts. So this small area right here would go down into Antonino Road. And other than that, the rest of this parking and pavement is caught by the storm drainage system. And, uh, I'll, I'll try and expand on what Diane explained about what we would do today versus what was done in 1986 for stormwater quality measures. Uh, so I talked about this area back here where there's an oil water separator as part of the storm drain system. And the reason that this was put in, in 1986, uh, this, this rear area here is where the overhead doors are into the service area of the facility. So the thinking was that any vehicles that would have potential to, to spill anything, it would be back in this area uh, where they're being offloaded from a tow vehicle or driven into the service center. Uh, so this area here has a catch basin at the low point, which pipes directly into the oil water separator. And then the discharge from that goes into a manhole, which is tied to the storm source system. Ultimately going down to the detention basin here near the intersection of Route 184 and Antonino Road. So as Diane alluded to, uh, the, the major difference in what we would probably add today, if we were retrofitting site wide for storm drainage, for stormwater quality would be the addition of a hydrodynamic separator somewhere in this area right before discharge into the detention basin. So we would probably pipe this catch basin and this terminal catch basin into a hydrodynamic separator, which would then discharge, uh, into the basin, but as it is, each of these catch basins has sumps, uh, they're cleaned out on a regular basis. And this area right here is where the, the real propensity for any spills may be because this is where the service vehicles are dropped off or driven into the building. And the oil water separator would be, uh, an acceptable means of protecting stormwater in this isolated area. It's basically the same thing as what we have uh, over in this area here for the floor drains inside of the building. It's the same kind of a structure, uh, the same plumbing setup. So it performs the same function of preventing any of those floatable hydrocarbons from getting into the storm drain system.
All right. It looks to me, maybe, can I just, I want to just sort of make sure this is clear. So those two storm drains that I'm looking at by the entrance right in front of the addition, those are post oil water separation. Is that correct?
Correct. Right. The oil water separator is right here. It's this single manhole. That's the access into the structure. It then discharges into this manhole right here, which is part of the overall storm source system. And then from there flows down to this catch basin, across the entry drive to this catch basin into this catch basin and then into the detention basin.
I guess, I mean, that's, that's where my concern would lie. I mean, I don't know, it, is that those three catch basins are pretty much just untreated or un- uh, it's just whatever's coming off the parking lot anyway.
Right. In general, uh, all the areas up here that drain to those catch basins are, it, it's mostly new vehicle display area. So that's not an area where you're likely to have, um, vehicles with, you know, substantial potential to have leaks or anything like that.
How about roof drains? Where are they tied in or are they?
Yeah, the, the whole building drains to a roof drainage system at the perimeter of the foundation. And that is piped. Uh, you can see this line right here. This is the roof drain discharge. It ties into this catch basin here. And then falls its way down into the detention basin.
Okay. And how, how, what is the capacity of that detention basin?
Uh, well, it was, it, it was sized for the impervious coverage on the entire site, uh, when it was designed back in 1986. So that there would not have been any, I'm assuming it would not have resulted in any peak flow increase.
Yeah. Okay. All right. I was just trying to get a feel like some, you know, uh, very often we will be told it's a 25 year storm or a hundred year storm or something like that. I'm just curious as to what.
In 1986, the standard was probably, uh, detaining to match peak flows for a 25 year storm. And it was probably analyzed for a 100 year storm, just to make sure that there's no overtopping of the impalement that, that would have been typical and that, that's actually typical for today's standards as well.
Right. So then, then the only other question I have is for staff and is it, why, and maybe this is, maybe I'm just not understanding it. But why are the plantings and those kinds of things? Uh, why are upgrades required to those, but not to the storm drainage system?
The, um, the landscape gate planting on what was approved on the 1986 approval and the existing regulations. Um, some of the plantings, I don't know whether they were never planted or they were removed at some point in the last number of years, but they need to be consistent with the 86 plan and/or the zoning regulations, the existing zoning regulations.
This could take a long time, huh?
The WRPD regulations allow, or if you're not doing any increase in impervious surface on the site, then you do not have to do the upgrading of the site for, for meeting all the existing stormwater regulations. So they aren't doing any increase in impervious surface with their addition. And they're actually removing a whole bunch of other areas where they were parking vehicles and they're not, no longer going to park vehicles and they're, and they're going to re-vegetate those areas. So.
Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Hell. You have any questions, Hal?
Um, just a little one. Well, first I'd like to comment, just kind of still talking to what, what, uh, Michael was talking about. And that, uh, I, I still feel good about all this being piped to retention area because that's, that is another treatment as it turns out. And it seems that the only thing that you might change, if you were going to update it now that you're removing that front gravel display area is you would have, if you were to build it now, you have extended some of the feature of that retention area and maybe you still want to do it as you restore it. So that it's actually a, a depression up into that area that you're restoring now, which will extend the amount of retention that you have. And when you extend retention, that, that treats the water. I'm actually kind of surprised that there's a catch basin in that, in that corner where it's one of the, where you can always, it's hard to see from what you've got there, but I'm looking at it. It's up in the, uh, as we're looking at the screen, it's the, there you go. Thank you.
The, this corner here.
And move your, move your cursor straight down.
Right here.
And to the right, and to the right. Well, actually you've got a cat, you've got a catch basin actually in the, in the, in the right hand corner, the inside corner there. According to your plan, because it says install silt sack during construction. So.
Right. Yeah.
There's one there, right? That, that one there, that's guy.
Correct.
And I'm kind of surprised that that isn't just a spillway. If you were to do it now, you probably would have just made a spilled way and rather than pipe it into something that can clog up, you just let it spill over the curb and direct it down, which adds that much more filtration. I kind of like scuppers and spillways myself. But as, as has been mentioned, since if you don't need to, then we can ask you to and it seems like you'd want to. So going back to your major, one major entrance, the front entrance there, if you want to just scroll that to the right. And I see you're adjusting. Since it's going to be, you're going to have to drive in, that is the major entrance that a hundred percent of your customers use.
Right.
And now you're going to have to do a sort of a quick S curve as you come out of the turn to make it into that left hand overhead door.
Right. That's why we're, we're trimming back that island a little bit.
Right. But what's also happening is that you're also, everybody else or most of the other people are going to be turning right to go into the handicap spaces or the space, the customer spaces just to the right of the island. And that space has been truncated. It used to be, you had what, you know, 40 feet or 35 feet width where there's all the space in the world there. And now you're backing it down to, I don't know, what's that, 24 feet?
Uh, no, I think it's actually, it's in excess of 30 feet with the building there even. It's a very wide open area right now.
Now it's wide open. I just wondered if, if it's 30 feet, then you don't have a dimension line there. So I couldn't tell. I suppose that's fine then. I just know that it's a hard angle to make and if somebody's coming out, there's, there's some jockeying of cars to do. But if that's 30 feet, then I'm, I'm fine with it. I have no other questions. I'm good.
Barbara?
I wish I could ask, ask a intelligent question about drainage, but I have to admit it's beyond my scope. Uh, so I have no questions.
So?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Steve, do you have any questions?
No, I have no questions.
Kevin, do you have any questions?
I do not, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I had a couple of issues on, on parking. When you look at the site, I went over there this morning and most of the spaces are all taken up today. And there are a lot of cars that are parked in the areas that are no longer going to be able to be used. What happens to all those vehicles?
So this is an issue that we've discussed a little bit with Mr. Antonino. And he understands that he has to do this because those areas are not authorized for use. Uh, and that's why he's agreed to corrective deficiencies. Uh, so we, we are acknowledging that it, it may not happen, uh, necessarily the second the site plan is approved, uh, but over the period of construction of that building, Mr. Antonino does own another Nissan dealership in Norwich, uh, where there is additional space to store, uh, a lot of the excess vehicles that are there now. So I think that part of his intention is to divert some of those vehicles to his Norwich facility. And he'll be able to make it work with the areas that he actually has permitted for, for parking and display use.
Uh, there are cars that were parked along the, the roadway on the west side of the building. Are those going to be allowable parking spaces?
Uh, basically what you see on the site plan is, is what we're asking.
Between the building, between the building and the property line, there are a whole bunch of cars in the park. Probably.
Talking about this, this.
Yes.
Area here.
Right. You don't have them designated as parking spaces, but should you?
Uh, well, not necessarily because this would be the fire lane to get around the back of the building.
Well, then they shouldn't be allowed to park there. If that's so.
Right. Yeah. So basically what we're presenting on this plan is what we're asking you to make your decision on. And, uh, you know, compliance will be the obligation of the property owner.
Yeah, but maybe you need to put signs, you know, no parking signs, fire lane or something there. I don't know that we have to put that into motion. Now, on parking or these spaces are really three different uses that you have. You have parking for customers and employees. Then you've got cars that are on display and then cars that are in storage. How do you designate where, where the parking space, those different types of parking occur?
Uh, well.
Or how do we know how many spaces are really required?
Well, we've actually, let's see it on the sheet. We here. Actually, it's the fucking plan right here. Sheet five of the plans, we've actually provided the parking calculations here to demonstrate how we've come up with the spaces that we have. Um, so, you know, you can see that they're labeled here. Now, you know, in practical terms, you can't necessarily control where a customer is going to park their car. They pull into the site and they find.
I understand.
Um, but we're, we're, we're showing that we've got the area available and the strip spaces available to comply with your regulations. Um, so I think in general, it, it's going to be close to what we're showing here, but every day to day use.
I guess you do have them signed here. Now the plan that we have, when you shrink it down to eight and a half by 11, you can't.
You can't read that stuff.
Reads the details like that. But they are designated spaces for the.
They are. And, and I think probably the most important, the most important ones are probably the ones right up against the building, which are, uh, you know, a little bit more specific for customer use.
And then on your write-up, you said that the area in the, behind the, or the backside of the building, the south side would no longer be used for parking and would be somehow gated or something. But there's nothing on the plan that I can see of where you're putting a fence up or a barrier up to keep people from using.
So on site plan number one, right here, uh, there's an existing paved road going up there, which we're going to remove. That area would be regraded so it could be stable with a gravel surface. And the only purpose in maintaining a gravel driveway is because.
I understand that, but what prevents people from using that back area?
So right here, we're calling for a gate to be installed there along that driveway right here. So that's, that's what would prevent people.
And that's the only way to, that's the only way to drive up there?
It is. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. All along Antonino Road, it's, it's wooded, uh, up here. It's, it's a steep hillside and most of it has trees on it.
But you just say install the posts. You don't say to install the gate.
What we're envisioning is probably that there would be a locked chain across there rather than a swinging gate.
Mm-hmm. And the other. Should you go on the plan, what you want to do? Whatever. I'm not saying a specific way, but I would think the plan should require or show there's something required. Not just the post, but.
Yep.
Be to show a chain or a gate. I don't care.
Okay.
I could just change the word for with hand.
In the gate. Yeah.
And chain or gate.
Well, it should show, I would think you draw a line and show something. Now on the front area, it, it, should there be something like a, a wall to prevent people going or using that front area for display, which we've seen in other dealers, the things sort of grow over time?
You know, uh, the, the problem with putting a lot of stuff there is that's where in the winter where the snow is plowed to.
No, no, I don't mean that, but what I'm concerned with is that right now it's an easy place to just where the gravel area is to.
Right.
Park us for, for display purposes. Well, if you don't. Park us for, for display purposes. Well, if you don't, I just wondered whether there should be a wall and maybe a foot high or something. So you can't drive down into that area and park your cars.
Uh, again, any, any sort of significant obstruction you put there, you make it impossible to plow snow. Or you just encourage it to get broken every winter when they do have to plow the snow and there's nowhere else to plow it to.
No, yeah, but it would, the wall would be to be higher up on the paved part. And lower on, you know, drop down, elevation should be dropped down on the grass. So you can't drive down. Not over it, but you know, it'd just be a drop off. Or put, put posts on there every few feet, so you can't drive, drive cars past the, the line of the parking.
Again, they, they need to have that area clear for, for plowing snow. It's, it's at the same rate as the parking area that's adjacent to it. So. It's not like there's a drop off there where you could put a wall.
That, but you should make one, because what we've seen on one of the other dealerships in town. That they keep expanding the, into areas that they're not supposed to. And what prevents them from doing that? It'd be nice to have some sort of a barrier that they can't, you know, like if you had a wall that. Was, so that the area that's now going to be planted, the, the planted area. That it would drop down to that, that grassed area, say a foot or something, so you couldn't drive down. It couldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect your snow plowing at all. And it wouldn't get damaged. Wouldn't that make sense?
Why, I understand what you're getting at, but you know, when you're plowing snow, you are going to drive onto that area more than likely.
Well, then you're going to destroy all the grass. You can't drive on that area. You'd have to push the snow on to, but you shouldn't drive on it. It's just like your lawn on your, when your driveway in your house, you don't. You push the snow to the side, but you don't drive on the grass. You know, the, the blade of the snow doesn't grow on. Plow doesn't grow on the grass, or you'll just dig it up. So it's gotta be inaccessible for, except to push stuff on top, like you know, snow. Isn't that how they usually do that?
Is there a curve there, Mr. Chairman?
I don't know. Yes, now, isn't it just flat?
Uh, no, I believe there's a concrete curve there right now.
It's showing a curve by the grading. Look at the grade lines and they sag. That's a curve.
Yeah, there's a concrete curve and that right now when they're displaying things there, they just drive up over top of the curb to access that area.
But that's what I was wondering whether it makes sense to have a drop off so that they can't drive over, you know, drive onto the grass.
With the other dealership, um, it was really critical that, that the area that you wanted to actually. Whether rope off or put rocks or whatever you did with the other dealership was because that was, um. Required twenty percent natural area on the site. That was the only natural area they had left on the site. To be in compliance with the WRPB, so it was really important that those cars not be. Um, parked on that area. At this site, they do have over twenty percent natural area. Especially with they're restoring that whole area to the south. So I can see your point that you don't want that as a. Display area, but it's not as critical, um. Because of, they do have that twenty, twenty, more than twenty percent natural area on the site.
No, but we're approving a plan that says it's not going to be used for display.
Right, right.
maintains that over a period of time, you know, in ten years from now, they're going to have it back as a display area again. What prevents that from happening?
So if, if that's what you're concerned about, then you can request that they do some delineation for that area.
Well, I would suggest that that's an enforcement officer or an enforcement problem. So if you see it occurring. Alert your zoning enforcement officer and, you know, follow the appropriate protocols. And I think you'll probably find that the vehicle would be removed pretty quickly.
If I can comment, please, is that?
Yes.
I think, I, 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 I understand the point of trying to make it an absolute that it'll be impossible for them to exceed it. Part of the reality is that this is, this is up on top of a hill. And it is their display area. We've already pushed it back. They were displaying forty feet in front of it, and now we pushed them way back there. With, they need to be able to show off their cars. This is their, that, that lineup there is where they're going to be showing their flashiest cars. Uh, from Gold Star Highway and pretty much anything you put there will block the view of it. So I think that could be, I think it's an undue hardship on them. And it really should just be left because they need to show off their cars. And this is the place to do it up on top of that hill. The most you could ask for is that six inch curb. I'm not sure what, there's already light posts there at what, eighty feet, sixty feet apart, I suppose. Maybe a sec, a small section of fence or something to further delineate it, but I don't think you'd want to do much because anything you put will be in the way of the cars.
No, I, I was not thinking of putting a visual barrier there, a driving barrier. And I, I don't have a hardship if they want to display the area, cars in that area, but if we're saying it's not allowed. Because it would have to be impervious surface, then it becomes a problem.
But I think the other thing to keep in mind is you, you are approving a plan that says they're not going to do that. Again, it becomes an enforcement issue if they do something that they say they're not going to do. And I think they understand the ramifications of. Doing something that they're not supposed to do, uh, and that there are potential enforcement penalties for doing that. So obviously. You know, working on behalf of our client, we don't want to incur a lot of additional site work expenses where they're already agreeing. To do something that's in compliance with your regulations. You know, we're asking you to approve something that complies with your regulations. I, I don't think we need to. Play the devil's advocate and assume that they're going to do everything that they're saying they're not going to do. That becomes an enforcement issue in the event that it does occur.
I was just trying.
I think at the very least, they deserve the opportunity to be able to comply.
Yeah. No, it's just that when you rely on that, it takes years to get it done. If anybody even notices, that's. You know, just happen, it just happens over time.
May I just say that I, uh. Jeff, I appreciate your concern and the applicant should just understand that this has been an issue in the past for us where. You know, sometimes compliance becomes a, uh. Difficult thing to enforce, and it's an expense for the town. So anyway, that's all.
Are you ready, ready for me to put up the motion?
And, and the, the other thing is their spill plan, I think, needs some help. That somebody ought to go in, ought to go through it and make sure that people on the deck plates can really understand what to do with it. Cause I think the average person mechanic in there is not going to understand what it means or where to do it. And if there's an emergency or in a big rush, you, you aren't going to go even read the plan at that time. You have to know in advance. I would think there ought to be some, somebody take a look at that to fix it up. So it really makes sense.
Can I just have one more question for the applicant?
Go ahead.
Are the, uh, the electric vehicle charging station and that, uh, the display area, that's new?
There are existing electrical, electric vehicle. Docking stations, I believe, over in this area, I think. I think they're actually in front of where the addition is going, which is why we need to relocate them.
Yeah, okay. But I saw there was some, there was another sheet that showed that there was a display area. I thought I saw that. Maybe not. Anyway. Thank you. I thought I had seen something.
Yeah. So does anyone have any concerns with the proposed motion? Then. And I assume we can treat that gate question, that's just a technical item.
I think in the, um, yes, we can do it, but I think, um. Do you see my, uh, motion on the screen?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that different than what was set up?
No, one A, it looks like it, I did include the. There shall be no parking, storage or display of any vehicles within the area. I can have it as a tech item to actually show the gate or barrier on the plan. Okay.
I didn't want to change, I don't think we should change the motion for that.
Okay, no, I'll put it as a tech item.
As long as we know what, what we mean by the, the gate barrier shall be installed to the southern area. All right, so no one has any problems with it. I'll make a motion to approve. Site plan, S I T twenty dash ten for Gerard Nissan four twenty five Gold Star Highway with the following modifications. One, notes shall be paced, placed on the final site plan. Colon, A, there shall be no parking, storage or display of any vehicles within the areas of revegetation. And the gate barrier shall be installed to the southern area of the site prior to the certification of occupancy for the addition. B, the schedule for ongoing maintenance of all stormwater facilities shall be added to the site plan. This schedule shall include inspection and maintenance of all stormwater facilities. Parent, including the repair of the outlet structure of the tension basin and the parent. Prior to the final C O for the addition and a schedule for continued inspection slash maintenance. Two. A note shall be placed on the plan that states, quote, any modification to this plan improved by another federal. State or local agency shall require additional review by town staff or the commission, whichever is appropriate. End of quote. Three, technical items as raised by staff shall be addressed. Findings, the planning commission finds that the replacement and upgrading of the landscaping meets the intent of section eight point one. Of the zoning regulations. The planning commission finds that the site plan with a lack of increased and impervious surface. The reestablishment of the vegetated areas on the site and the continued management of the stormwater system. Meets the intent of section six point four for the Water Resource Protection District. Is there a second?
Second.
Move, motion is moved in second. Any discussion on the motion?
Uh, the only thing I would say is, Mr. Chairman, you read improved where it says imposed. On number two.
Oh, okay, so.
I just.
Corrected.
I don't know which is the legal.
I didn't realize.
Yeah, that's okay.
All right, good catch. Okay, so that. No one has any other, uh, discussion items, will, when vote on the, uh, motion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, an extension, motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you.
So Chairman, I have a comment, just so, just, just before we just lose this, because it's a great example. Has nothing to do with the motion or passing it or this particular feature, but I'm looking at the parking calculations for the site. Which were done in accordance with our regulation. And it's, they're bizarre is that, uh. It's requiring ninety seven spaces. For the site. The calculation is based on five service employees. So it's not, there's no reality to what this is for a car dealership. Obviously, there's five service employees. Maybe there's a dozen salespeople, administrative or whatnot, so there's seventeen perhaps. And then how many cars they work on out, leave outside at one time. So the calculations for this facility should be. How much storage are they going to have for additional cars being worked on? In this case, it's leaving. Seventy cars, eighty cars for, for, uh, for patrons. Car dealerships don't have eighty cars for patrons. There's just, you don't have that many visitors. They don't have, they only have a dozen salespeople on a good day. They just don't handle anything like this. So we know, even though they provided that much, that's not how these spaces are going to be used. They're going to be fill of cars that are for sale.
That's, that's why I raised the question over the designating, designation of the spaces. Because parking for a car dealership, it should only be customer for a customer and employees. And the rest should be, the parking should be designated as either storage or display.
Well, in, in this case, I, I kind of agree, that's kind of true. When I say our calculations for this. Need to be changed because there's no way a car dealership of this size has eighty people visiting it at the same time.
No, I understand that, that, but I think you got, it's not parking like anything else. So, yeah, you need to have, how do you calculate? The, uh, sorry, the areas for garages or dealership should be different.
It should be quite different, not just up like square footage.
No.
As we're, as we're working through a number of these uses with the new zoning regs, um. One of the things where, where realizes is something in the parking regulations or need to be relooked at. As far as different uses, so this will be one of them.
Yeah, this is, it's a unique one where cars are what they sell. So that's a unique one, but.
Yeah. Well, and service too.
It's service.
Have a lot of cars sitting there for service as a partner available because.
Be a function of how much service area they have and not how much showroom they have, so.
Yeah. No, it's, you really need to designate them as separate, separate functions to come up with your calculation. Okay. That's one for the next commission. All right, moving on then to the next site plan, S I T twenty one oh five. Three Water Street modification, Three Water Street.
Yeah, Eric Goodman is here to present, so hold on a minute, let me promote him. And then I am going to share my screen so you can see the floor plan and he can speak to it.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's your plan.
So we didn't really change anything with regards to the floor plan of the building based on what we presented to you. Uh, upon the initial approval last year, but what we did do was rent out. Space one oh four and one oh five, which is the rear of the building to Abbott's Lobster from No Ink. As one restaurant unit. And then we also leased retail three or unit one oh three to a separate entity. Doing a combination of retail and in-house dining. Um, besides that, nothing has changed. Uh, we did run it by, uh. Colin Kelly, who asked for Reese Recovery Units, which is fine. Um, and then there was a comment from Chris Clark and at the Fire Department with regards to hoods and abbots. And they found a recirculating hood, which he approved that requires no exterior. Um, penetrations or any sort of like rooftop venting. Uh, so that's what they'll be using for their cooking area. Um, besides that, we submitted the documents from Ed Wanky, the engineer on the project, um. Just updating what was originally sent out as well as updating the parking requirements. Uh, as we looked back through it, we noticed that we actually over calculated the parking on the original submission. Um, but with the new submission based upon the seat. Um, but with the new submission based upon the seat count, it actually increases the parking requirements by four spaces, which will be fulfilled, or fulfilled, excuse me, in the voucher program, so not a major change, um, but nevertheless, one that we had to bring before you.
Okay, does staff have any additional information to add?
Sure, just some supplemental information, so obviously this is Three Water Street, um, it is under construction. Uh, the floor plan in front of you is the first floor underneath it is the parking. Uh, originally you saw that all of these units were going to be used for retail. Um, so as Eric described, some of them are now going to be restaurant space, and that does increase the parking requirement. Um, on site, there are.
23 spaces?
Thank you, 23 spaces, and there are 14 residential units above this first floor. So the residents will have priority for parking on site, the rest will be um, for folks who are using retail or restaurant, um, and then, as he said, the rest will be met by the validation program.
Okay. So I'll open it up to commissioners, if they have any questions, I'll start with you, Mike.
I guess just, uh, as far as the new, new restaurants, is all of the dining is going to be done inside the building?
Correct.
I don't have any questions, thank you though.
Hey, Hal?
That, the smaller, the one in the middle, the smaller restaurant, what, what's the nature of that? What, what is that?
It's gonna be a um, cheese charcuterie and small plates, um, the primary focus of it is to go, though, um, but there will be an in-house dining component.
So what is the, that sounds fine, the, unlike Abbott's, which is, it's a sit-down restaurant and it can handle as many people as it can handle. I'm a little concerned is that it might have end up with a line outside, but at least for the back of the building, there's a place to handle that. But for, what's, what's the expected throughput of the, the small restaurant, of the cheese place? How many customers per hour? If it's takeout, then there's a lot more people walking through, is what I'm wondering.
I, I have no idea. And that calculation hasn't been done, and anything would be pure speculation.
Sure, somebody has an idea, because they're going to be trying to make a, a living doing it. And if they didn't have the right numbers, then it wouldn't work, but so somebody's got, my, my only concern, and I, I, I don't think we can do anything at this point, but my concern is what my concern was initially with this building was up in the front, front on this plan, lower left corner, we have that minimal four foot by 20 some foot aisleway. And if it was just all stores and offices, uh, it would be very lightly traveled, there would be one or two people at a time strolling through one way or the other. Now with a decent, and, and Abbott's Restaurant and X and another shop that's can actually pump people through pretty quickly. If it's popular, that's a lot of people who cannot go both directions at the same time through that aisle. I know there's a back stair, but you don't want to be using that, because that just dumps directly into the driveway. Uh, that'll be for those of us who are in the know, will come over from the other side of the parklay, parking lot someplace, but there's, you can't get there from the street.
Like I said, and then the initial, though, um, application, I, I would have loved this deck to have been 20 feet wide, 30 feet wide. I would have done anything I possibly could to make it bigger. You know, we were limited upon the space, it meets the ADA requirements, it's not perfect, but I don't think anything is. It's no different than a narrow sidewalk, it's no different than a line that forms in front of young ones, I mean, you know, I hope these places are vastly popular, but you know, it's a tight town, that, there's no doubt about that.
Record is quite different from a, a narrow sidewalk, because a narrow sidewalk, you can step off in either direction, it's, it's, if it's just a walkway, it's not bordered by columns and railings. Now this one is, and it happened that way, because you wanted to maximize the, the retail space in that unit number two, is that? You don't want to bite into that to, to get any extra room, and now you're left with this. So I, I just needed a comment, that I don't know if you can do anything about it, and I think that's gonna be a horrible pinch point for the rest of time, if this restaurant, if the small restaurant is successful, I don't think it'll matter for, for Abbott's. Because that'll be batch processing of two and four and six people at a time, and then they'll stay there for a while, like any other restaurant. But, uh, in fact, they might linger outside, because there is enough room on the outside there, so their waiting areas works back there, but for this thing, if it's popular, then that's a lot of people through very little space. And it's long, it's a long space, it's not just a doorway. Other than that, I have no other comments.
I just, I don't want to get in a debate with you, but I do just two things, I would encourage you, one, please stop by anytime and walk by it and take a look if you'd like, but the second thing is that sidewalk or that deck is no different than the sidewalk in front of SIFT, and when that backs up down the street, and you've got people walking down to go to Pizzetta to go in the other direction, the only place for them to step off to is on the street, which isn't obviously not safe either, I mean, I understand here they have a guardrail. Again, I just think it's, it's a makeup of what the property is, and I, I actually couldn't take out of retail too, without completely changing the structure of the building.
Okay. Barbara, do you have any?
I don't have any comments on, on this plan, um, but I am concerned about the rooftop, which I know isn't under discussion right now, but the screening up there is, is, it's fine if you're sitting on Water Street, it's not so fine when you're driving down Route 1 and you, you see all of the mechanicals, um, I think the screening could have been much improved uh, for the top, for the rooftop.
That's all.
It's worse when you walk down. You can see more.
Yeah.
Can't even see the cupola because of the.
No.
All those air conditioning units.
Yes, it's really unfortunate.
I know. Sue?
I don't have any comments, thank you.
Steve, do you have any comments, concerns?
The, um, the parking calculation was a net increase of four spots for the restaurant?
Correct.
Versus, versus retail, and was that for both? Both new restaurants, just four more?
That's both combined, because he over calculated the original computation.
I gotcha. Yeah, no, I think that that's, uh, if, those are the only changes, that's, uh, that's all I got.
Gavin, do you have any?
I do, so, um, how, how is the parking signage, how is that labeled for the 14 versus the, the nine people?
So the 14 residential units get priority in the garage space, um, that each unit or each parking stall has its own signage that says reserved or owned by, or I forgot what the actual verbiage is on it, but it says unit 10X10520, whatever. And the other ones are labeled, um, based upon where they're going to, um, and then the, the extra ones will either be unlabeled or labeled visitor or something along those lines.
So you're not gonna just designate them for restaurants? In this, in the two restaurants that we're looking at?
Um, I have to look back at, it's, so it's 18 in the basement, minus one for ADA, leaves you 17, so that gives you three extra plus four in the back, I think, is seven, and then one goes with each resident, which each retail lease. So, they're gonna be labeled for the particular unit, I mean, if they're used by an employee or used by a visitor, you know, it's gonna kind of be up to whatever happens. And I think it leaves one extra for visitor, if I did it right, one or two.
Okay, so my only point is, um, again, this proposal before us is in compliance, yet we still don't have any algorithm or parking plan, so while this, your, this particular proposal is, again, fits into the Mystic Art Association, we have not solved that problem as a town, so. Um, love to hear back from staff as far as when we're gonna hear that proposal, but otherwise, it looks good to me. Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I don't have any.
May I go back, one, one, one more question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know in the original application, there was a lot of discussion about those doors swinging out onto the deck, and we compromised and had this, uh, where they were indented, back into the room, bumped into the rooms. How, how is it that there's one door there at the bottom of the stairs that, that wasn't done to? And, uh, what was the rationale?
The, the one on that stair, stair two? Above?
Yeah, the bottom of the stairs, there's one door there that swings full into the walking space.
Well, you get, you would all ask for the doors on the smaller section of the Porsche to be indented, there actually was a door on retail two on the uh, what is that, the southern side? That we had removed, and then we inset all the doors along that deck, stair, stair two is probably never gonna be used, it's a residential staircase. Um, almost any resident coming in is most likely gonna go up through the garage stairs or through the garage elevator. So we didn't, we didn't indent it. But you would ask for the commercial spaces to be indented?
Actually, I, I just asked for all the doors to be indented. To be, to be honest, or just to the doors. It wasn't about the commercial spaces. In fact, I'm happy to say, see the way you did it with the, the space next to each door. I think you really improved the plan. It is puzzling, but it is puzzling that you didn't do it for this. Mostly emergency escape door, but. I agree.
It's the second egress door, but it would have also created some problems, because of the way the steel fabrication was, I couldn't have gotten enough landing, even though it, in my head, it makes absolutely no sense that the landing in stair two has to be ADA compliant, even though you just walk into a staircase, it still needs to be ADA compliant, and the way the steel was fabricated, there's no way to inset that door and then still have an ADA compliant landing to a staircase that no one can use if they're ADA, so. Kind of one of those wacky things, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
I'm not understanding.
It's not gonna have heavy use anyway, then.
The landing, this, the bottom of stairs two needs to have a certain width and depth to be ADA compliant, even though when you go into stair two, the only place you can go is to a staircase that you can't use if you're if, if you need accessible access. So even though it doesn't go anywhere, but because it's a some sort of egress, according to Peter Springsteen, it had to still be the size it was, which we couldn't have changed that door because of the steel fabrication.
Yeah, mm hmm, okay. Alright.
I think you would have just pushed that jog back that additional foot or whatever that is, or.
And then.
18 inches.
Then the size of stair two's landing inside the door would not have been ADA compliant.
Uh, it doesn't look like it is now, anyway, but what is the requirement at the bottom of the stairs?
I, I don't remember off the top of my head, but it's, it's.
I just can't see it on my little screen here, I mean, there's a width there of those stairways, what is the stairway width? Forty?
I, I'd have to pull up the plans on them.
Six foot one. Six foot one wide at the bottom.
Three foot six?
Six foot one.
Well, but it's not really part of the application we have.
No, I'm just, you know, these things, we, we debated this for quite a while, and this compromise that I thought was for me, I wanted them entirely inside of the spaces. And I felt like I compromised on that, and then Hal is remembering that we said all of the doors, and, and it doesn't seem like, uh, that happened either. And certainly not here.
Hmm.
I'll, I'll look at the motion, um, I don't have those files.
It would have been a matter of reconfiguring that.
Um, I don't think we can address that.
Yeah, and I'm remembering it was near the narrower portion, so I'll, I'll pull the file and look at it.
You, you understand, you're talking about an 18 inch indent in a section that's never gonna be used.
Yes, I do.
In a, where there's no zoning code relevant to that door indentation.
Okay. Perfectly.
Thank you.
Alright.
I just noticed, by the way, that there's an electrical room next to it, that the door isn't shown, and I'm sure it opens up too.
Hmm.
Well, actually, it doesn't show a door on it, but I'm like, there's a door next to it that's electrical room, I don't know which way that one opens.
There, there's no door, they, um, ever source wouldn't allow us to put a door on it.
That's just open, oh.
It's just open to the meters.
Wow, okay, it's just a meter room then, and an emergency switch, alright.
Okay. Suppose the applicant have any concern with the motion?
No, I'm fine.
I assume you've seen it. I have Dev, on, on the motion on the hood, why is it being submitted to the Office of Planning and Development, is it for approval or just for information?
It's just for information, um, I, I don't know that, I don't know that these plans are gonna get filed in land records, or I would have said, put them on the plan, um, and frankly, he's already, um, given me copies of it.
No, I just wonder whether, so all you care about is getting, receiving it, you don't.
Exactly.
Alright. And on this grease recovery unit, we say, as required, does that require Department of Public Works approval, or?
It, it does, it does, they are, um, essentially in charge of the sewer system, and depending on the type of restaurant and the type of food served.
But instead of saying as required, should say as approved by the Department of Public Works?
Sure.
Hmm.
Sure.
That's what we want to have happen, right? Is to have it submitted to them and approved?
Sure.
Okay. Cause the required might be a spec or something, or a vague. Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve a site plan modification. SIT 21-05, Three Water Street, to change two retail units to standard restaurants with the following modifications. One, the detail of the type one hood system that does not require an outside vent shall be submitted to the Office of Planning and Development Services. Two, an active grease recovery unit shall be installed on any fixture that may discharge fats, oil or grease as as approved by the Department of Public Works. Three, any staff technical items shall be addressed. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, a discussion on the motion?
Um, I would just like to know if, what happens if Hal's memory proves to be correct?
Well, when we find out, we'll have to decide what to do. Hmm?
Right, if, if it is, um, I'll look at the motion and I'll discuss that with the property owner, and, and we'll get it changed.
Mm hmm. That would be a second.
Thank you.
Okay.
As I recall, it was only the short section of the deck. That being said, if it was the entire side, again, I mean, I'll rip the door out and I'll move it in 18 inches, and it'll make a massive difference to a door that's not used.
Oh, we'll have to wait and see what the motion says. Alright, if there are no other, I, discussion on the motion, we'll vote on the, the motion for, uh, SIT 2105, Three Water Street, all those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion is carried unanimously?
Thank you.
Now we'll get, the Seagull Union will complain to us, because, uh, they'll lose all their lobster sales down in Noink, where they can get their food and have to go to Mystic and so they. Alright, old business, we have no old business, no, no business, we have, uh, new applications are noted.
And we have, uh, one addition. And we have one additional application that's come in since the agenda was prepared. A modification to one one five four Quonic Road. That's the old massage therapy school.
Oh.
A change from a school to residences to five apartments.
Also, somebody's bought the property?
Yes.
Oh, that's interesting. So it goes back to residential use. You're gonna put a gas station back? I used to take my car there for service in the old days when noise had it and you serviced all the
Dating yourself, Jeff.
Maybe a mechanic will move into the apartment.
Okay, referrals. You have ZBA twenty-one oh three. ZBA referral for Chelsea Groton Bank, I know for Quonic Road.
Right, there are two setback variances requested for the modifications that Chelsea Groton is proposing to their building.
Staff see any concern with them?
No.
But we'll be seeing this as a, because the site plan changes. So we're going to see this again as a site plan?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
But we, they have to have this before the site plan can be submitted.
Right.
List it as new applications. It's already in.
All right.
Okay. Does anybody have any concerns with this item? So we have no
No, we do not.
No comment on that. Commission reports. Let's see. I guess we received notice of a affordable housing presentation on, was it this Monday or next? Next Monday, I guess it is. That's all I had. Report of commission. Does anyone have anything to report?
I I'd submitted a couple of concerns to the zoning enforcement officer. And the wheels of government are turning rather slowly. I do have some more places I would like to add, but I
Send them on. Sure. Go ahead. No, and can you copy me on it? So I know that they've come in.
Okay, I will.
Thank you.
That's all.
Well, could those also be forwarded to at least me? I'm curious, Barbara. Thank you.
Okay.
The eyes up on the road.
So what are they on? Now you've got everybody asking questions.
Well, they're no.
However, you want to do it.
I'll let you know.
Then she can send them out to us. Okay, report of staff.
So just a couple of things. Your decision on the subdivision for fifty-five Star Street was appealed.
Yeah, I forgot to bring that up.
Starting transcripts and getting the return of record together. Late last winter, the council heard a presentation from Brian Kent about complete streets and a complete street policy. The council was interested in it and asked that it the idea be forwarded to the planning and zoning commission for comment. So I'm going to send you Brian Kent's presentation. If you like, I can also invite him to a meeting if you're interested in hearing what he told the council. And so it'll be an agenda item, I think, on the next meeting if there's not a lot of applications on it. Along with maybe some policies that town manager has has pulled from other towns. And we can kind of take a look at it, discuss a policy and and prepare some input for the council. Is anyone interested in hearing Brian's presentation or is just seeing the PowerPoint enough?
Let's start with the PowerPoint and see what he has to say, right? And then, as you say, when we maybe we, when we have a gap, Deb, it'd be appropriate to hear him.
Great.
Yeah, it's on, it'll be on the agenda next time.
Sure.
Cause there's I think the the thought behind complete streets makes a lot of sense, but you don't have any many new streets or streets wide enough to
But it can guide retrofits too, and it can guide when they repave or when they install sidewalks. So
Cause part of Route one would probably really be useful for Noink Road to where you get a lot of bicycle and pedestrian traffic.
With that said, we're doing a study now on the potential for removing a lane from Route one.
Yeah, DOT approached the traffic authority and asked whether they would be interested in having a road diet study done of Route one. So the traffic authority said, yes, we would be interested. That's as far as it's gotten. The study hasn't started yet.
Oh, and that's what they would talk about narrowing the road?
It's possible. Yeah.
That's what they would. Well, they did in one place. When you went into the and first entrance into the parking lot going west, when you're where Big Y is, they did reduce the lane there. Okay. Anything else, Deb?
I think Diane wanted to talk about scheduling a special meeting for zoning maintenance workshop, get them all in shape for an application. The ones that the minor fixes that we've been working on.
So you want to send a poll out for that?
Well, um what's your schedule for next Tuesday? I know it's an open, an open Tuesday. Does anyone have conflicts for that? And if they do, then yeah, we'll send out a poll.
Oh, you want, okay. Does anyone on the commission have a problem needing next Tuesday?
Not yet.
Social schedule is not really filled, be very honest.
I'm good. I'm good. Yeah. All right.
I'm hoping, you know, maybe, maybe an hour's worth of your time, hour and a half. What do you think, Diane? I mean?
I don't think it's gonna take more than an hour, probably.
All right. Start at six thirty?
Right, and in workshop format.
And a workshop format, right? No public communications. So it'll only take an hour.
Yep.
Okay.
Did you have anything else, Diane?
No, I don't. That's it.
All right. No one else has anything else, so I'll make a motion for adjournment. Is there a second? 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 Everybody have a good night.
Very good.
Night.